All right. Good afternoon, folks. Appreciate your patience. It is 3:07 PM, so we are going to get started. I am Councilman John Bullock, Chairman of the Finance and Performance Committee. We are joined today by members of the committee. To my left, Eric Costello of the 11th District. To my right, Councilmember Danielle McCray of the 2nd District. And to her right, Councilmember Felicia Porter of the 10th District. We're also joined by staff of the committee, Margery Curran. Thanks for joining us, as well as representatives from the City Council President's Office and the Mayor's Office. We also do want to note there are some folks who are out of town right now for a conference, so we'll note that. And then also note that Councilmember Yuchi Slifer has an excused absence for the day. So today, we do have the quarterly budget briefings from the Bureau of Budget and Management Research Capital Budget under the Department of Planning, and the Baltimore City Public Schools, and eight supplementary general fund operating appropriations. So as a reminder, we do also have a meeting this evening for the entire City Council at 5:00 PM. We will do our best to get out quickly, but again, to be thorough in doing our business. So first, the committee will be hearing from representatives of BBMR, and then we'll ask questions and be able to recess after that. So we will then hear the supplementary general fund operating appropriations, and then we will also then reconvene to have the rest of our remaining quarterly budget briefings. So we will get started as we are right now. So now, we have our Legislative Oversight, LO 210003, Quarterly Budget Briefings. And at this point, we'll turn the meeting over to our representatives from BBMR, Laura Lawson. Thank you.
Wonderful. Good afternoon, Chairman and Councilmembers. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present to you today. We are here today, first, to give you an overview of our analysis regarding first quarter spending and based off of that data where we are projecting to end fiscal '24 for the city's general fund. So based off of our first quarter projections, we are projecting a small deficit for the city's overall general fund of about $600,000. So we are essentially operating on a very small margin in terms of overall budget variance. Again, this data takes into account expenditures and revenues that were realized from July 1st through September 30th of this year. On the revenue side, we are seeing a projected surplus of about $6.5 million, or about 4.3% variance from what was assumed in the budget. And on the expenditure side, we're projecting about a $7.1 million deficit, or a 3.3% variance. One of the things that I do want to note is that as I go through the revenue numbers, we're going to see that the overall revenue surplus numbers are slightly higher than that $6.5 million. But that's because of, we are projecting highway user revenue to come in about $6.3 million higher than what's budgeted. But the $6.3 million of additional revenue, if we do realize that from highway user revenue, that will have to go back to a highway user revenue eligible expense. It can't be used for overall budget balance within the general fund. And so if it does look, you know, as we move through the second quarter, if it does look like that revenue is continuing to come in at the projected level, what we'd likely do is come back to you all with some sort of supplemental appropriation, where we look to appropriate additional dollars for an HUR eligible expense that would potentially be something within DOT's operating budget or adding additional funding to DOT's capital program based off of that additional revenue. So we'll talk a little bit more about that, but just want to clarify, that's why we're distinguishing the HUR surplus from the overall general fund surplus. So as I walk through these numbers, we're first going to talk about what we're seeing on the revenue side, and then we'll talk about what we're seeing on the expenditure side. So in terms of the revenue, some of the bright spots that we're seeing in terms of revenue, investment earnings are an area of strength for us going into the current fiscal year. And so we are seeing higher yields in terms of the returns that we're getting on the city's, portions of the city's cash balances that are invested in the market on a daily basis. We're also seeing that the costs that we had assumed for offering some of our tax credit programs are coming in a little bit lower than what was assumed in the budget. And so that's contributing to the overall general fund revenue surplus. We are also seeing that some of the relocated speed cameras that were part of some of the budget actions as part of the fiscal '24 budget, those are resulting in higher revenues as we anticipated. We anticipated that by redeploying a batch of the speed cameras that we'd realize about an additional $1.5 million over the entirety of fiscal '24. And actually, through the first quarter, we realized revenues are ahead of schedule by about $725,000. So that's coming in a little bit more optimistic than what we had assumed in the budget. We do continue to see that real estate market is slow, but there's still transactions that are happening, and properties are holding their value. So while we're not seeing some of, you know, the high number of volumes that in previous fiscal years was contributing to higher transfer and recrodation taxes, we are still seeing that properties are selling, and we are seeing that they are maintaining their higher value. So that is, I think, a piece of good news in the current real estate environment that we find ourselves in. The other item to note about how we're projecting the surpluses, as you recall, when we balanced the fiscal '24 budget, we had assumed that we would utilize about $30 million from the city's unassigned fund balance as part of the overall package. This projection assumes that we would not have to tap into that fund balance because we only want to tap into that fund balance if we have to, as a revenue of last resort. And so throughout our projections that we'll present to you in fiscal '24, we will exclude the assumption of utilizing that fund balance. And as I previously mentioned, HUR is coming in strong. That's really driven by a couple of factors. Number one, the city's receiving a higher allocation based off of legislative changes that were adopted at the state level back in 2022, as well as seeing sort of strong inputs based off of the HUR allocation formula. In your materials, we have provided a summary of these revenue highlights so you can see sort of the ups and downs of our projections by these different categories. We've also broken out local taxes into the more, into more individual categories so that you can see sort of what's happening within each of those different revenue sources. This slide, again, just shows us what the major variances look like by revenue source. So what you can see here is, on the investment earnings, we are assuming that we're going to have a surplus here of about $40 million. So that is really, especially given the fact that we're operating at these margins, you can really see how this is really playing a big impact in terms of our overall '24 numbers. The savings from the tax credits are realizing about a $6.6 million surplus. And then the highway user revenue surplus is about $6.3 million. And then you can see some of the deficits that we are projecting. Energy taxes are coming in a little bit low. Cable and franchise fees are also projected to be about $1 million lower than budget. I'll talk a little bit more about what's causing that. And then we're also seeing some small deficits in property tax and the transfer and recrodation tax. So talking a little bit more specifically about these areas where we're projecting surpluses on the revenue side. As I was just showing, for investment earnings, we're projecting a surplus of about $40 million. So just to put that number in context, the fiscal '24 budget assumed that we'd realize about $26 million in investment earnings. And we're actually on track to realize about $66 million from this revenue source. To put even more context behind those numbers, when interest rates were at their near-zero levels during the pandemic, this dropped to essentially zero in terms of revenue that the city was realizing. And so you can see there what those drop-offs looked like back in '21 and '22, and how it's really rebounded based off of what we're projecting here in fiscal '24. Really, what's happening here is a combination of two factors. Number one, we have more cash on hand than we would typically have on hand because we have all of the proceeds from the ARPA award as part of the overall cash that the city is able to invest. Because in the fiscal '24 budget, we had assumed that the actual spend-down of those ARPA dollars would be a little bit more rapid than what we're seeing. But because we're holding more cash because of slower spending on ARPA, we are realizing additional interest returns from the higher overall cash that we're able to invest. The other thing that's happening is the higher interest rate environment that we're in means that our investments in our, in government instruments is more attractive in the market. And so we're just seeing a higher rate of return as well. So we're really sort of benefiting from two factors simultaneously that's driving this revenue number up. On the tax credit side, in the overall general fund revenue, we budget the cost of administering all of the different tax credit offerings that the city has out there. In the fiscal '24 budget, we utilized for all these data, different data sets for each of our major tax credits, and we looked at projects that were in the pipeline and historical trends and whatnot. And so we had assumed that the cost of offering those programs would be about $103.4 million. Based off of what we've seen through the first quarter and updated information that we have about projects in the pipeline, it's actually looking like we're going to come in closer to about 90, just under $97 million. So again, the cost of offering these programs is going to be a little bit less than what we assumed in the budget. And so that is, in terms of how we present this, that ends up showing as a surplus for revenue of about $6.5 million. Highway user revenues were budgeted at $193.4 million, and we're projecting that we will realize about $199.7 million from this revenue source. So again, that's about a $6.4 million surplus. As I was mentioning, the improved proceeds are a product of the change in legislation and the increased allocation that the city was anticipating as part of that change from 2022. You can see that out of the different inputs of the formula, the city's share of the corporate income tax is really contributing to the overall projected surplus. And as I mentioned, we're closely monitoring this in terms of, as we receive additional receipts from the state to really refine the projection because ultimately, what we'll want to do is we'll want to make sure that we have additional expenditures based off of the actual revenue that we're realizing from HUR. The number, when we built our projection for the first quarter, we only had one payment from the state. And so when we do second quarter, we will have additional payments that will really help us to solidify this projection. Now, looking at projected deficits, in terms of our real property taxes, we're projecting about a $2.9 million deficit. A portion of this is just driven to changes in assessments that we saw between what was assumed in the budget and what we're realizing. The other piece that we're noting is that there is a declining drop-off in the collection rate for property taxes. Modest, but it is still there. The collection rate has historically been very, very high, but we are seeing, we have seen it drop to, you know, over a percentage point closer to 96%. And so that is something that we think is connected to the cancellation of owner-occupied tax sale. And so this is just one of the things that we're monitoring in terms of trying to understand the relationship between those two items. On transfer and recrodation taxes, the budget had assumed just under $97 million from this revenue source, and we're projecting that will bring in about $93.6 million, or a shortfall of about $3.3 million. Again, this is primarily just driven by what we're seeing in terms of real estate activity. Transactions overall are down from about 26%, to 23.8% for the same period last year. But as I was mentioning, the transactions that we are seeing, we, the properties are holding their value. So if we look at the first quarter from fiscal '23 and the median sales price, and we compare that to the first quarter of fiscal '24, we can see that the median sales price is up from $216,000 a year ago to $220,000 this year. So that's good news for the market, for the city's real estate market overall. The cable and franchise fees, so this is a fee that's paid to the city by Comcast. In the budget, we had assumed $6.3 million. We're projecting $5 million. This is a fee that's driven by the number of subscribers, who, specifically cable subscribers. So not broadband, just folks who have cable subscriptions. And this is one where we have seen a very dramatic drop-off in the number of subscribers, in number of residents who are cable subscribers. So that number has gone from $106,000, or 106,000 households in fiscal 2020 to just under 60,000 households in fiscal '24. So that's about a 44% drop. And so this is something that we are, will be continuing to monitor. This is also a fee that is part of a multi-year agreement with Comcast. And so this is something that the city's preparing to renegotiate the fee. And so again, I think as we see, as we see the change in subscribers and the change in consumer behavior, this is something we're really going to have to look at as we look to the next contract that gets negotiated for this. Now, flipping gears and talking about what we're seeing on the expenditure side. So as I mentioned, we're projecting a small deficit overall of about $7.1 million. There are some positive signs in these numbers. We are seeing improvements in vacancy, in the vacancy count. I know during the deliberations on the fiscal '24 budget, we spent a lot of time talking about vacancy rates in individual city agencies. Those vacancies are, the vacancy rate in the general fund has declined by about 4.5% from July to November. So in July, we started the fiscal year with just over 2,000 funded vacancies in the general fund. And at the start of November, we were down to just under 2,000. Also happy to report that four of the agencies that we have requested supplemental appropriations for in fiscal '23, those agencies are on track to end the year in budget for fiscal '24. So we like to see those changes. The areas where we're continuing to see deficits and working with agencies are in the Fire Department, the Law Department, the Police Department, and Public Works. This is primarily being driven by the use of unbudgeted contractual services for a variety of different costs, as well as personnel expenses primarily overtime in areas where we have daily minimum staffing requirements. The other thing that we're closely monitoring is how staff time is getting charged. So when we build the budget that we bring forward to you every year, it is based upon assumptions that positions will get charged to different funding sources. And when in the live environment, those positions get charged in a different way, that means that one fund or another may be picking up personnel costs that were not part of the budget. What we are seeing currently is that in some cases where we had assumed a position would perhaps be funded by a grant or an outside source, the costs for that position are actually hitting the general fund. So in instances where we're seeing that happen, we're working with those agencies to make sure that those personnel costs are getting assigned to the appropriate place so that the general fund is not picking up those unplanned costs. These are the agencies that are projected, based off of first quarter, are projected to have a significant budget surplus. We define that as greater than 10% of budget variance. Again, this is based off of what we were forecasting through the first quarter. So these numbers will continue to come into focus as we move through the fiscal year. We get more information, especially agencies with a lot of seasonal spending. But agencies with some of the, with these larger surpluses are generally some of our administrative agencies that have sort of personnel-heavy budgets, where those are their primary expenditures. Next up are agencies that are projected to have a minor budget surplus. So we would call this a surplus between 0 and 10%. You can see we've got a bigger batch of agencies here, but some of the larger agencies that would fall into this category would be our Health Department, the Department of Housing, the Library System, Rec and Parks, the Sheriff State's Attorney and Transportation. All of those agencies, again, are projected to be relatively close to budget. Again, we'll just note, like with an agency like Rec and Parks, Transportation, a lot of seasonality can change those numbers. So for example, Transportation, we'll know a lot more as we move through winter and can understand what's going to happen on the snow side. And then finally, agencies that are projected to end the year in deficit. I'll walk through each of these individually. The first is the Finance Department. The department's projecting about a $200,000 deficit. That's about a 5, a 0.5% variance. This is primarily driven by unbudgeted contractual costs to support payroll functions. This is something that the department is working to wean its way off of. There were additional resources that were brought in under contract in order to support the biweekly payroll function, or the weekly and biweekly payroll function post-workday implementation. The Director and the Director of the Bureau of Accounting and Payroll Services, again, is working on filling positions to move away from the use of contractual staff to supplement that function. The Fire Department's projecting about a $25.7 million deficit. That's about a 10% budget variance. Some of the drivers here would be the use of overtime, specifically in fire suppression. This is an area where we continue to see high vacancies. We've seen vacancies grow in this service since the start of the fiscal year. This is also an area where there's a very lengthy process and timeline involved in filling those vacancies, and an area where we have a daily minimum staffing. So if we have vacant positions, we have to meet those daily minimum staffing, or those daily shifts by calling folks back for more expensive overtime. The Fire Department is also continuing the practice of utilizing a contractual service to help supplement basic life support ambulance services. This is something that started during COVID-19 and was originally reimbursed by FEMA. But the department is continuing to utilize this practice just as a way to ensure adequate coverage for 911 calls. But again, it's an unbudgeted cost that we're working with them to sort of figure out how we plan for that moving forward. And finally, this is an area where we do have some mischarging of staff time associated with the 911 center. And so again, that we're working with the department to reallocate those costs. That would bring their deficit down by a small portion. In the Law Department, we're projecting a $1.2 million deficit. That's about a 9.5% variance from the budget. This is primarily driven by some personnel actions from reclassifications that had happened and were not, and those actions were outside the budget process in terms of how they were planned for. So we're working with the Law Department in order to understand how we can absorb those costs. In the Mayor's Office of Cable and Communication, we're projecting about a $100,000 deficit, or a 4% budget variance. This also is driven by staffing costs. We had assumed that we'd be realizing a certain level of savings from vacant positions, and there's less turnover than what was, the turnover is slower than what was assumed in the budget. Again, that number will change throughout the fiscal year based off of any changes to their staffing because they are a relatively small shop as well. The Mayor's Office of Homeless Services is projected to have about a $1.2 million deficit, or about 9% budget variance. This is an area where we have some grant-related personnel costs that are hitting the general fund. Do just want to note that the new Director, Director Simmons at MOHS is working very hard on this issue. And this is something that we believe will be rectified as we move through the fiscal year. We also have some shelter contracts that were committed at higher levels than what was assumed in the budget. So again, working with the MOHS staff to really understand sort of what's committed, what is eligible to be funded by different grant sources so that we're making sure that we're maximizing all the state and federal grants that are awarded to the agency. The Police Department is projected to have about a $3.7 million deficit. That's about 0.7 budget variance. This, too, is overtime. We continue to see a growing number of vacancies in terms of the sworn personnel in the department. And so that, again, is contributing to the ongoing need of overtime to fill shifts. And then finally, Public Works is projected to have about a $3.2 million deficit, or 3% budget variance. This is driven by unbudgeted contractual expenses to support trash and recycling services as they work to stabilize and restore weekly recycling. And then the continued trend of seeing increased tipping fees. Those are the fees that we pay for what we take to the landfill. And this is a continuation of a trend that we've seen over a number of years and is actually one of the items that was the cause of the fiscal '23 supplemental that you'll also be taking up today. Do just want to say, you know, in the area of Public Works, that's another one where the department has been very, very aggressive in terms of staffing up and filling vacancies, especially some of the newly created positions that were funded as part of the fiscal '24 budget. So I do think that that number will change quite a bit as we move throughout the fiscal year and as we see that we have more staff onboard, as we increase the fleet availability rate, we'll see less of a reliance on external contractors to support those efforts, and we'll be able to do more in-house and hopefully see that deficit decline. So with that, I would be happy to answer any specific questions regarding our first quarter analysis.
Well, thank you so much for the comprehensive presentation. I do want to note, right on time, we are joined by Council President Nick Mosby. Did you have any questions before I turn it over? Okay, so I will say thankfully, you anticipated a couple of questions I was going to ask around, obviously, the decline in the franchise fee, and then also looking at the cost of offering a tax credit. So you kind of explained that with tax rates and all that. But I'm curious, though, about the declining property tax collection rate. Do you have any idea of what's happening there and why that slight drop-off has happened?
It would be, I mean, this has been something, and I will defer to Pedro, that we've seen over a number of fiscal years. What we're seeing this year, you know, is a continuation of a trend. You know, again, we think that there is some relationship with the decisions regarding the resident occupied tax sale, canceling the resident occupied tax sale because, but again, that's a theory that we would have in-house. Again, it is a modest decline in collections, but because that was so close to 100%, it is something that we in the Department of Finance are tracking very closely because we would not want, that's not an area where we would want to lose significant ground.
Right, and I definitely understand, taking owner-occupied houses out to tax sale, obviously that's something we support. But again, thinking about what the ramifications are with that. Okay, members of the committee, are there any questions? Yes, Chairman McCray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I wanted to start with the HUR funds. We know that these funds are for local road maintenance. One thing that you pointed out is that we could, one potential use would be for snow cars. What did we currently have budgeted for snow cars for DOT?
I'm going to look to Ben for that number. I don't have that right off of the top of my head.
While he's looking for that number, are you anticipating us going pass that amount?
Not right now. We're projected that we would stay within budget. Through the first quarter, the costs that we were able to see associated with snow would have been those costs that were associated with the prep, you know, the cost that goes into getting the equipment ready and some of the pre-purchasing of supplies. We've also taken into account what we know for, based off of the contractual rates that we have negotiated. negotiated for contracted snow, you know, the contractors that support snow removal. So we are, we're not projecting a deficit there. The note on the slide is, snow removal costs are HUR-eligible. So if we do get into a situation where, you know, if we have a significant snow year, or, you know, a scenario in which those snow removal costs are, are way above budget, we could potentially look at the HUR, at the HUR funding as a way to fund that deficit.
Thank you. And I just asked that question because I know how hard members of the administration, your office, DOT worked, especially with my Senator, Senator McCray on making sure that they were able to increase these HUR funds. I just want to make sure that they're going to what we really need this for, which is road maintenance, and that we're budgeting the appropriate amount for snow removal.
And in answer to your question, Councilwoman, the, the fiscal '24 budget assumes, or included about $6.7 million for snow removal costs.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to jump to my second question. It was regarding DPW and contractual expenses. Could you elaborate on specifically those contractual expenses regarding, I think it was recycling and [inaudible]?
Yeah, so DPW is utilizing some external services in order to supplement their existing city staff in order to provide solid waste services. I believe one of those contract, there's, there's two contracts that come to mind. I believe one is being funded out of the general fund. Again, the, the fiscal '24 budget did not assume that we would be utilizing external contractors to support those services. And so what we're working with DPW to understand, as we go through the fiscal year and as they staff up, are we, what does we, what, what our theory would be is that we'd be utilizing those contractors less, and that, you know, by the, I, I believe, you know, as we have the additional staff, as we have the additional equipment, the need for those contractors to supplement in order to cover routes, that that would go away. And so again, that's something that we're closely monitoring and would hope to have more of an update for you when we come back to present to you on second quarter.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions from committee members?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to ask about the Fire Department. It's between FY '22 and FY '23, the general fund for Service 609 decreased by over $12 million, only for the Fire Department to need and request $18.9 million in supplemental funding. What was the reason for that reduction in the general fund budget in Service 609 from FY '22 to FY '23?
Yeah, so Service 609 is emergency medical services, or EMS service. Within that service, that's where we have budgeted revenue that the city receives from 911, from ambulance rev, ambulance billing revenue. So between fiscal '22 and fiscal '23, the city began to participate in a program, the ESPP. I, I do not know the acronym off the top of my head, but I know my colleagues from Fire back here could, could offer that. Through the ESPP program, the city was able to receive additional ambulance revenue from, based off of transports for Medicaid-eligible patients that were receiving care. And so that resulted in a significant increase in revenue of about $40 million. And so you saw the, in, in terms of how that shows in the budget, is the, the revenue, the assumed revenue gets budgeted as a negative amount for Service 609. So the actual expenditures that were being funded in EMS, those have, have not changed. There was not a significant reduction. What you're seeing when you look at the budget numbers year over year is largely a change to what's assumed for revenue. So in fiscal, in fiscal '24, I believe that we are assuming around $60 million from EMS revenue. That would include revenue that we would get through the ESPP reimbursement program as well as just regular ambulance revenue that gets paid from, from other, from non-Medicaid-eligible transports.
Any additional questions? Okay, well, not seeing any. Well, thank you for the presentation. At this moment, we'll go into recess, and we will then start our, our other hearings. Let's go ahead and do that. So, ready? Okay, so now we will switch and we'll go into our Supplement General Fund Operating Appropriations. The first one, Council Bill 230457, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriations for the Board of Elections. That's $1.3 million. This appropriation provides funding for the balancing the Board of Elections budget for FY '23 due to costs associated with the 2022 primary election. Service 899, fair conduct of elections, and the funding source is surplus revenue. Let's see, it looks like we have our agency reports. It'll do all the agency-stamped reports from law, finance, elections, and Board of Estimates. We're all, okay. All right, then we'll proceed to our, our next bill, which is City Council Bill 230458, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Mayor's Office, Office of Cable and Communications, and that's $300,000. This appropriation provides funding for the balance of the Office of Cable and Communication budget for FY '23 due to costs associated with the staffing of the service, Service 876, media production. We have, again, reports from law, finance, cable, Board of Estimates was approved, and so I think everybody stands by the reports. No changes. All right. So, and again, everybody stands by the reports. And just for clarity, what we will do is we will read all those appropriations, then we'll ask the individual questions so we can expedite things. So again, appreciate your indulgence. Okay. So next we'll have our Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, and that's for the Fire Department in the amount of $18,900,000. This appropriation provides funding for the balance, or balancing the Fire Department budget of FY '23 due to costs associated with the staffing, overtime payments, and contractual, contractual services, excuse me, Service 609, emergency medical services. Again, we have our reports from our agencies, law, finance, fire. I think everybody stands by the reports. We will also next be hearing 230460, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation for the Health Department. That's $12 million, $12.3 million. And this appropriation provides funding for the balancing Health Department budget in FY '23 due to costs associated with providing provider contracts and services related to COVID. I will note that our representative from the Health Department will be needing to leave relatively soon. So if you have a question for the Health Department, please let us know early if you can. We will also then, again, everyone stands by reports. If anything changes, let me know. Then we'll have 230461, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation for the Law Department in the amount of $1.9 million, and this appropriation provides funding for balancing the Law Department budget for FY '23 due to legal fees and supporting service fees exceed the adopted budget, and that's Service 860. Next supplementary, this is 230462, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation for the Liquor License Board in the amount of $300,000, and this appropriation provides funding for the balancing the liquor license board budget for FY '23 due to costs associated with overtime payments. Law, Finance, and Liquor Board, again, looks like everybody has reports that are in line. Two more to go. Next we'll have 230463, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation for the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success in the amount of $400,000, and that is to appropriation provides funding for the balance of the Office of Children and Family Success budget for FY '23 due to costs associated with unplanned contractual staffing costs that were not fully offset by vacancy savings. Again, the reports are all, I think, in place. And then lastly, we will be, also be covering 230464, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation for the Department of Public Works in the amount of $1.9 million. And again, this appropriation provides funding for the balance of the DPW budget in FY '23 due to landfill tipping fees and recycling. Let's see. All these bills were approved by the Board of Estimates, so we are in a good space. So with that, I do want to, again, turn it over to members of the committee who may have questions. I'll start with Council President Mosby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I'll start off, I guess, Board of Elections, and then we can just go bill by bill that way. So my first and only question from Board of Elections perspective is, I guess, the fiscal '23 budget anticipated an increased cost associated with the gubernatorial election, but also anticipated a savings associated with the mail-in voting. Do we not see the mail-in savings that we expected? And how did we kind of miss the election cost projections? Do you know?
This was primarily due to the date change of the 2022 primary election. So, you know, we are, we did realize some of the efficiencies that we had, had hoped for in the budget, but the, the date change was something that happened outside of what we hadn't anticipated for. So, you know, I, I do feel much more confident in terms of what we have, how we have those costs projected for the elections moving forward.
Totally understand. Thank you for that.
Mm-hmm.
Other committee questions for Board of Elections or others? Oh, yes, Chairman McCray.
I have a quick one. You, Councilwoman Porter, this is just a follow-up to her question. Of the 18.9 million within the Fire Department, how much of that was actually overtime costs?
The overtime portion of that was about, actually, the, the department's deficit spending for sworn overtime was about $26.7 million. We, we have a budget of $9.7 million. The fiscal '23 actual for sworn overtime was $36.4 million. And the reason why the supplemental is for, for less is because there was savings realized from vacant positions to offset a portion of those, of that overtime cost. And then, you know, we did seek to pull as much funding from the EMS revenue that was available to cover the deficit as well.
Okay. My apologies, just as a, just as a follow-up. I didn't see the Fire Department on the list. You said, hey, we have four agencies that are on track to be within budget. But I didn't see the Fire Department on that list as well. We had BOE, Board of Elections, Health Liquor Board, and MOCFS that are going to be on track to hit their budget. Can you speak to more about what we may be looking forward to in the future regarding costs that are going to impact our budget with the Fire Department beyond this, what you're requesting as an appropriation?
Yeah. So this, the deficit that we saw in fiscal '23 is pretty consistent with the deficit that we're projecting for fiscal '24, and is consistent with what we saw in fiscal '22. I think my, my team and I are working really closely with the Fire Department to really figure out how we get to a place where the department can end the year in budget. I think part of what has been a challenge, and a challenge for the department, is that we got behind on hiring during the pandemic, and it's been a challenge to get those, the vacant positions filled. And so now we're at a position where we're trying to fill out of a backlog of vacant positions as well as keep pace for attrition. And when you're talking about the, like, positions like firefighters that require a very lengthy recruitment and training process, it becomes difficult in order to, you know, you're not positioned well to quickly refill and to, you know, get to a higher staffing level. And so one of the things I know the department is really focused on is trying to aggressively recruit. They've, they've just updated their eligible list, and will be trying to move folks through their academy as quickly as possible. But I really think in order for us to get to a better place in the Fire Department's budget, we have to get to a, a better staffing level so that we're filling our shifts with regular time, not with overtime.
I appreciate your response, and I'm going to hold my questions because I know, I'll take them offline. I know that the Public Safety and Government and Operations constantly digs into this, so I'll just take my questions offline. Thank you.
Okay.
And, thank you. So I know we've had a question regarding the Fire Department. We've talked about Board of Elections. Any questions regarding cable communications?
I have another question regarding the Fire Department. I guess the fiscal year '24 budget for that service item 609 is basically pretty much in line as where it was for '23. The assumption is, do we have the same expectation to be in this position next year? If so, like, what are we doing now? How can we kind of start budgeting more consistent to the reality of the situation?
Yeah, and I, I mean, I think that will ultimately be the, the policy choice regarding funding for Fire, is if, you know, we want to bring the budget amount more in line with what we're seeing in terms of actual spending, or if we want to look at other actions that could be put in place in order to bring spending more in line with what we've historically budgeted. And so I think, you know, again, I think that's a, a policy choice that we'll have to wrestle with as we build the fiscal '25 budget. I, I do think that it is, you know, it is difficult when we look at these general fund numbers overall to have to be prepared to absorb, you know, a $20 million deficit every year that, in, in one particular area. I, I think that's, that's a challenge from a budget perspective, and, you know, and I would say in fiscal '25, we have to kind of look to figure out, like, what our approach is going to be here.
Understood. I mean, I guess the concern that just jumps out at me, you know, when you look at the numbers, is for Service 609, that's a, that equates to an increase of 2,668% from what was budgeted to what's being asked from a supplemental perspective. Is that right? Like, it's budgeted at like $700,000. Supplement is about $19 million?
Yeah. This, this budget is, is a, is a tricky one to look at because of how we present the interaction with the, with the revenue. What I, what I would say, the way that I look at it is, it's, it's about a $62 million service for us to provide, regardless of, of the revenue, our EMS services, you know, that, that is sort of the overall cost. I will say the, you know, the, the shortfall that is, in terms of what we're requesting from the supplemental, that is not just EMS-related. I, you know, portions of that are, you know, EMS expenditure-related, but also fire suppression-related outside of Service 609. And we also know that there's some equipment costs that, that were unanticipated in fiscal '23 as well. So I think it's sort of the combination of, of those items. But again, what we really have to do moving forward is sort of figure out how we can get to a more appropriate staffing level so that we can be less reliant on overtime within the department.
So the things you listed, some of those things are rolled up into the 19 million?
Yes.
So should Service line item 609 be broken out more granular?
We can, we can provide that for you. We can provide- We can, we can provide that for you. We can provide-
I'm just saying, just from a budget purpose, like, moving forward, should, should it remain intact, or do we need additional service items to kind of accurately reflect what the distribution of the funds are needed for?
What we, what we tried to do for simplicity sake in the, in the supplemental is to, well, actually, the supplemental for this service is, is attached to Service 602 Fire Suppression.
Okay. I'm sorry, I have it at 609.
And so the, the, nearly all of the department's deficit is related to expenditures in Service 602 Fire Suppression.
So you think the service number 602 accurately reflects the three things that you kind of mentioned that rolled up to the 18 million?
Yes.
Got it. The only last question is, I believe this is true, and it may be it's wrong based off of 609 versus 602, but 609 between fiscal year '22 and '23 decreased by $12 million, over $12 million. So I, I guess, do we have justification at the time to decrease it only to then come back and ask for $19 million now?
So the, the, the change in the general fund amount that you see in the budget document from fiscal '22 to '23 is related to the new ESPP revenue that the city began to receive in fiscal '23?
Got it.
'23 was the first year that we started to get that revenue.
Got it. Thank you so much for that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No, thank you, Mr. President. Those are helpful and clarifying questions. Are there additional questions for the Fire Department while we're on the subject? Okay, not seeing any. Let's go for Board of Elections. Any questions specifically with Board of Elections? Okay. Cable Communications. Want to make sure we get everyone addressed. Okay. Health Department, as you mentioned.
Yeah, I have some for Health Department.
Yeah, yeah, please.
I guess this is kind of consistent with the question I just asked regarding the Fire Department, but I think between fiscal '22 and '23, service item 315 decreased by over $67 million. I guess, what was the justification associated with that decrease for us to come back and ask for additional $12 million now?
So the, the supplemental that we are requesting for the Health Department is primarily related to the city's costs associated with the sort of final stage of the COVID-19 response costs. So at the very beginning of COVID-19, the, the city started charging all of our response costs to a, a central cost center in the Health Department. The decision to do that was to help facilitate the reporting process to FEMA so the city could get reimbursed for our COVID-19 response costs. And so since the start of the pandemic back to March 2020, those costs have been unbudgeted. And what we've been doing is getting reimbursed, we submit costs and we get reimbursed from FEMA retroactively. And so the, the deficit that we saw in the Health Department in fiscal '23 was, was expected because all those costs were unbudgeted. That really runs the gamut from, you know, costs associated with sheltering at, at the hotels. There were additional vaccination costs. You know, it really runs the range. And up through May of, of this year, we were, we've been able to get reimbursed from FEMA. We're in the closeout process where we're getting those, those final reimbursements from them. So, but moving forward, those are not costs that will continue to incur. So following the May FEMA deadline, those programs that were continuing got moved to an ongoing funding source. So where the Health Department had expenditures that were continuing related to COVID-19, those costs were either moved to an ARPA grant, another funding source in the department, or they've identified other savings within their general fund to continue those costs. The other big costs where we were still, where we were still regular, area where we were still regularly incurring costs was in the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services for the hotel sheltering. Again, those costs are now being funded through other federal grants that the, that the department has or, as well as an ARPA award that they had received.
And, Mr. President, if you don't mind, except related question pursuant to what you just mentioned in terms of grant funding, has, is the change in the budget number also related to any changes in, in grant funding or grants have dried up? I'm just curious.
So for fiscal, for if the, as Council President Mosby was referencing, Service 315, which is emergency services within the Health Department, if you look at their general fund expenditures in fiscal '22, it's about $68.4 million. The budget is just shy of $1 million. The, the $68 million reflects sort of those COVID-19 costs that we were able to seek reimbursement for. The recurring general fund expenditures in this service are about $1 million, which is consistent with pre-COVID levels.
Any additional questions for Health?
Just one additional question. Has the administration entertained utilizing ARPA dollars? I know that we've had a major problem spending down the ARPA dollars. Have we entertained the idea of utilizing some of the ARPA dollars for these types of hits?
For, for activities that were previously being charged here? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I, I can't say specifically because all of those decisions, you know, the funding decisions are, are made through the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programming. I can say that in the case, and I'm looking at my colleagues from Health, I know in the case of some of the programs that were previously receiving FEMA reimbursement, we wanted to use the FEMA dollars first before we did ARPA.
Of course.
Because we were getting, at first, we were getting 100% reimbursement, and then for the last year, we were getting 90% reimbursement. So I believe the approach had been for many of the agencies to exhaust FEMA up to May and then to look where you had ARPA awards and shift these programs to, to ARPA. I know that was the case in the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. Una making you confirm that was the approach for Health?
So I guess the question I have is, with the supplement tools that we're reviewing today, why couldn't the ARPA dollars take care of that?
So what we're trying to do through the supplemental appropriation is to, the Health Department incurred those expenditures. It took them over budget. And so we're trying to meet the, we're trying to meet the charter mandate that, you know, the, the budget is increased to reflect, to ensure that the, the department does not show a deficit at the end of the year. Ultimately, what will, the, how that will be funded is we will get a reimbursement from FEMA at some point this year.
Oh.
Yeah. So it's, it's a timing gap.
I guess my confusion is, it's not 100%. We don't get 100% back anymore, though.
Now we're getting 90%. So the city did, with this approach, the city would have, for that last, for that last portion of expenditures in fiscal '23, we would have been receiving 90% reimbursement. So we've absorbed 10% of the costs. But again, we won't get, we'll get those reimbursements. We're closing out all those projects now. It's a timing lag.
Understood. And I guess the delta, the 10%, there's been no decision to utilize ARPA funds for that?
No, because I think, and I would want to verify this with Director Kearney, Kearney, but I think we would be tiptoeing around utilizing a Fed, one federal funding source as a matching source for another federal funding source.
And that's a concern?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Any additional Health questions from the committee? All right. Law Department. Any questions for Law Department?
Yeah, just one quick question, Mr. Chair. I guess the, what are the new fees in services incurred by the Law Department that we couldn't anticipate in the last budget? I think this is a change or increase of 115% in service item 860?
Yes. So this is, this supplemental is, is covering costs with, associated with external legal support for various litigation efforts taken on by the city. This is something that is, can vary quite a bit from year to year based off of what is happening on a litigation front in the city. So it is something where we did see additional activity in fiscal '23. We're continuing to monitor with the Law Department in order to ensure that those costs are being charged to the, to the correct place and to ensure that we are appropriately planning for those costs in the budget as well.
Do we know the specific cases that kind of rolled up for the additional $2 million needed?
I, I do not have that information, but I can take that as a follow-up request that we can provide with our colleagues in law.
Thank you. If you could provide that back to the committee, I'd truly appreciate that.
Any more for Law? Okay. Liquor License Board. Any questions? Do we have some for Liquor License here?
I don't believe that, I, I don't know that they were able to send a representative today.
Okay. Just curious about overtime cost. That's something that I guess we would need to have more clarity on what overtime costs look like for-
Yeah. So in fiscal '23, they changed some of their operating model associated when they inspect different licenses. And the change in the operating model resulted in additional overtime costs associated when they were carrying out some of their inspection work. That is something that we are seeing. As I mentioned, the, the Liquor Board is one of the agencies that is projected to be within budget for fiscal '24. They're continuing that new operational practice, but we're seeing less overtime in terms of how they're approaching the staffing for that. They've also redone some classifications for some of their positions, which will also reduce their overtime as well.
Additional questions for Liquor Board? All right. Children and Family Success. Any questions, Mr. President? Members? Not seeing any. Okay. Department of Public Works, that we have great representation here. So questions regarding Department of Public Works?
5% change. That's-
Go ahead, Mr. President.
No, I mean, 5% change. It's six sigma in comparison to the rest of the, the changes. So, no, it's good.
There you go. Questions from, from the committee?
I, I do have one, more, more questions regarding, if we could just go back to, I guess, the question around the FEMA dollars. So the 90% reimbursement, that just goes into general fund for the next year, right? And that's kind of how that washes away. Is that accurate?
That's correct. That's correct.
Thank you.
And also, do we have anybody who signed up for public testimony for the supplementals? Nobody signed up? Okay. All right. If there are no more questions, I will wait for a member to make a motion on the first bill, which is 230457. Board of Elections? Moved by Porter. Second by McCray. Bullock, yes. Costello? Costello, yes. McCray? McCray, yes. Schleifer excused absence. And Porter? Porter, yes. So this passes four to one, and it will be moved to second reader and double read on Monday, December 18, 2023. Okay, then we will go on to Bill 230458, Cable Communications. I'll wait for a motion from a member of the committee. Moved by Porter. Is there a second? A second by McCray. All right. Bullock, yes. Costello? Costello, yes. McCray? McCray, yes. Schleifer excused absence. Porter? Porter, yes. So for two, four yeses, one excuse absence. Again, this, this motion passes. The bill moves to second reader and will be double read on Monday, December 18, 2023. Next, 230459, Fire Department. Is there a motion? Moved by Costello. Emphatically. Thank you. Is there a second? Second by Porter. Bullock, yes. Costello? McCray? Schleifer excused absence. And Porter? All right. Four, four yeses, one excuse absence. Motion passed. Bill moves to second reader and will be double read on Monday, December 18, 2023. And now we're at Bill 230460, Health Department. Is there a motion? Moved by Costello. Second by Porter. Bullock, yes. Costello? McCray? Schleifer excused absence. And Porter? All right. Four, four yeses, one excuse absence. Motion passed. Bill moves to second reader and will be double read on Monday, December 18, 2023. Next, Bill 230461, Law Department. Moved favorably by Costello. Second by Porter. Bullock, yes. Costello? McCray? And Porter? And Schleifer excused absence. The motion passes and will move to second reader and be double read on Monday, December 18, 2023. Now, Bill 230461, Law Department. Is there a motion? Oh, moved by Porter. Look at this. And, oh, sorry, set four, six, two, excuse me. Liquor License Board. Moved by Porter. And second by Costello. Yeah, we switched. Yeah. Bullock, yes. Costello? McCray? Schleifer excused absence. And Porter? All right. Motion passes. Bill moves to second reader and will be double read on Monday, December 18, 2023. Next, Bill 230463, Children and Family Success. Is there a motion? Oh, moved by Porter. Second by McCray this time. Okay. Bullock, yes. Costello? McCray? Schleifer excused absence. And Porter? All right. The motion passes. Bill moves to second reader. It will be double read on Monday, December 18, 2023. And last but not least, Bill 230464, Department of Public Works. Is there a motion? Move. I'll give it to Costello. Moved by Costello. Second by, is there a second? Second by McCray. Let's see. Bullock, yes. Costello? McCray? And Porter? Schleifer excused absence. It moves, now the motion passes. Moves to second reader and will be double read on Monday, December 18, 2023. So again, thank you. Yes, Councilman Costello?
I know that, just wanted to use this opportunity to ask a, a question on Liquor Board real quickly, if I could. My understanding is that pay raises were presented to the Board of Estimates yesterday. Can you confirm that's correct?
Yes, I believe they were on yesterday's agenda. I, I know for certain that the, the internal committee that makes recommendations to the Board of Estimates voted favorably on their, on those at their last meeting. So yes, I believe they were on the agenda.
So if they were passed yesterday, do we know when those will go into effect?
Yesterday, they, they would have an effective date of yesterday.
Okay.
Unless there was a different effective date noted on the personnel action, they could potentially have been retroactive for, for longer. I would be happy to look at the agenda and confirm for you.
Could you follow up with me and the chairman via email just to confirm that?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Mr. Chairman, thank you for indulging me.
Oh, thank you for the question. All right. So now we are going to reconvene our hearing for Legislative Oversite 210003, Quarterly Budget Briefings. So next, we'll turn over to Plan Department, Capitol Budget for Nicole Stewart. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Bullock and members of the council. Thank you for this opportunity to provide this update. I'm joined tonight by Sarah Parinellum, Division Chief, as well as our CIP supervisor, Kristen Ahern. And if we could go ahead and bring up the slides for tonight. So when we joined you in late September, that was our first time providing this type of update. And so it might be helpful if we just provide a recap. So during that hearing, we provided some top-level information about the FY '23 budget and then FY '23 CIP expenses. Tonight, we will be updating you with that same information for FY '24. During that hearing, we also received some feedback from you all about the kinds of information you would want to see in this type of update going forward. We talked a little bit about some of the limitations of the data, so we'll be revisiting that, but also speaking with you about how we operationalize some of your feedback and to questions- But also speaking with you about how we operationalize some of your feedback and to questions for future analyses that we will be working towards with our colleagues over in the Department of Finance. So that's what we'll be doing tonight. So for the public, just so that they are aware, by city charter, the Planning Commission must submit a recommendation for the six-year CIP to the Board of Estimates. So we are currently in 2024, planning for that 2025 CIP budget, which does include six years of CIP within the budgeted CIP years for six years. Next slide. Also, for the public, we wanted to remind them that information about our capital budget is available on the planning website, planning.baltimorecity.gov. You can find previous, previous six-year programs as well as information by agency for both requests as well as what was allocated. In addition, when we present some of these figures tonight, we want people to also be aware that there are a number of different funding sources that comprise the CIP. So this is just a breakdown of what those sources were for FY24, the FY24 capital budget, which was in total $831 million. Of course, the majority of those funds being the geo-bonds, but there are a number of different sources that comprise the CIP. Next slide. We might be frozen. Okay, all right. So in terms of the limitations of this analysis, as we mentioned at the last hearing, the information about the CIP, of course, we all, we transitioned to Workday. And so what is currently in Workday is FY23 and FY24, both capital budget and capital expenses information. So in order for us to go back and provide a more detailed analysis, we know that the priority that you all discussed at the last hearing was trying to understand sort of the level and speed of spending by our agencies. So in order to do that, again, we are going to continue working with our partners at Finance in order to be able to go into the previous systems, in order to be able to provide that in future updates. But this is the limitation, current limitation of what we'll be providing tonight. All right, so in terms of just a high-level overview of the budget and information, as I mentioned, for FY24, the total budget, including all sources, was $831 million. That represents 268 projects amongst all of the agencies for FY24. And what we calculated so far, based on the information that is in, currently in Workday, to look at the expenses that have been made during FY24 Quarter One, what we can see is about $101 million has been expended on active agency projects. And so the same as the last presentation, we wanted to just provide an example to show you sort of what this information is and what it is not. So it is a, basically a snapshot in time of what that budget was for specific agencies and for specific projects, and then what the spend has been on those specific projects that were programmed in FY24. And so as an example, for Enop Pratt Free Library, they received $3.7 million, and there was about $800,000 in spend overall. However, when we look at specific projects, we can see that, for instance, that first project, the Forest Park Library renovation, they spent funds in FY24, but there was no money programmed in FY24 for that particular project. So we just want to make sure people are aware of sort of the snapshot that's being presented to them right now. Next slide. All right, and then let's see, so this is what the snapshot looks like for each agency. And so another example is Police, for example. We can see that they've had expenditures in FY24. However, for their particular budget, they were not allocated funds in FY24. I believe their funding goes directly to DGS instead of through Police. And so this is what that snapshot looks like. So as we presented at the last hearing, we know that the key question that you all had was, right, exactly. How are these agencies spending through their allocations? We understand that some of the challenges that agencies experience include things like inflation, supply chain issues, et cetera. And we know that projects are, you know, there is a process by which these projects have to go through in order to be, you know, awarded, designed, until, before they can actually start to expend funds on a particular projects. And so we just wanted to revisit some of these challenges that we had identified previously that we talked through. But on this next slide, we want to sort of show you how we have to sort of operationalize those things. So one of the things which we are looking at, attempting to include in future analyses, trying to understand the actual revenue category, so the appropriations by revenue category, so whether it is geo-bonds, some type of state or federal dollars, what does that allow us to see? So one issue we've identified is outside of the geo-bonds, there could be other sources of funds that the agencies within their budgets, they identify that they're expecting to receive this money, but they may not actually receive that money. So when we go to look at what a balance might look like for a particular agency in terms of what they've been allocated, it might include funding money and funding sources that they actually have not received. And so we're trying to actually look at the appropriations by revenue category in order for us to then determine potentially, you know, to potentially correct balances to account for where they have not received funding in those additional, those other revenue categories. Also, we are looking at, including the appropriation by fiscal year in our analysis going forward. So one of the things we talked about is sort of the year in which an appropriation is made is an important information to know, because we could be looking at projects or a fiscal year or a project that just received recent appropriations, and they might not be at the point in that process where they're actually able to expend funds. Or the next line, or they might be still waiting on additional funds in future years. And that could also contribute to why they may not have begun to expend money on individual projects. And then similarly, with the fourth point, we want to, we're looking at trying to understand the status of projects so that we are able to determine and identify, right? So if we're looking at a balance for a particular agency, it might be $5 million. However, we want to be able to say, right, but that balance includes projects that have not started, projects that are still within the procurement process, projects that only received appropriation within the most recent years. And so those are the potential future analyses we are continuing to work towards and that we are hoping to be able to provide that context when we, as we continue to provide these updates to the council.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much for the update. We do understand the limitations, as you've already mentioned. But again, this is helpful information. I do want to open it up to questions from the members of the committee before we turn it over to Mary Ann Cox from the school system. But as we do so, I'm also going to ask Vice Chair of the Committee, Eric Aceld, to chair us for the remainder of the hearing. So, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Colleagues, any questions? All right, we're ready to move to City Schools?
Please.
We're good with our friends from Department of Planning? Thank you all. Have a great day. City Schools, you're
You can, you can sit wherever you are most comfortable. That seat will work just fine. Just press the button on the right so that your mic lights up red. Good to go.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Mary Ann Cox. Oops, sorry. My name is Mary Ann Cox. I'm the Deputy Chief Financial Officer for Baltimore City Public Schools. I'd like to welcome any of the committee members. You know, we're here for the Finance and Performance Committee Quarterly Budget Briefing. I'd like to greet the committee members, city council members, city schools, cabinet, board, or staff members who might be here, and of course, our community partners. I would like to point out that the information that I will be presenting is not a projection, but it's a status report on our year-to-date operations through September 2023. I also want to point out that these are draft numbers. All of them are revenue and expense. So going through our, our presentation, we know the purpose, the reason why we're having the presentation is because of the City of Baltimore legislation LO21-0003 that calls for quarterly budget briefings. So that's what we're doing. So I wanted to talk about the revenue first. When we look at the City Schools revenue, just generally speaking about the passage of time, we might be expecting that we would have accumulated 25%, leaving 75% to be received. That's not so in our revenue because of the payment frequency that we get for our two largest funding sources. Our largest funding source is the State of Maryland, you know, the money that they give us. And we get the money, we get the general fund money from the State of Maryland in six equal payments across the fiscal year. So year-to-date, September, we will have received two of the six payments. So we will have received a third of our revenue from the state, so that skews the percentage. Also, just for information, the City of Baltimore pays, sends the money to City Schools twice a month. And they do that over the 12 months of the year, which we appreciate. One point I wanted to make about the City of Baltimore revenue, if you look at this general fund revenue amount of $388,180,000, that differs from the required local contribution amount of $392.5 million. The reason for the difference relates to the TSI grant, which is the Transitional Supplemental Instruction for Struggling Learners Grants, which part of the money we get from the City of Baltimore goes to that, but it's reported in the Special Revenue Fund as a restricted grant. So two of the payments that MSDE identified as their version of general fund, we report in the Special Revenue Fund, which is the TSI and the COP grants, the Concentration of Poverty Grant. So the State of Maryland, of course, all of this is revenue-driven from the State of Maryland. They apply the same formulas to all the LEAs in the state. So we are funded according to the way the calculations work out, primarily based on need, student enrollment, and relative wealth. Those three factors have a big impact on the calculations. So the, the third revenue source that I have here is federal revenue. For City Schools, federal revenue includes E-Rate, ROTC, the IRS subsidy that we get twice a year, and FEMA if we get it. And I agree with the City of Baltimore people who, it's largely unpredictable exactly when you'll get the FEMA revenue, because you have to accumulate the costs first, and then you seek reimbursement if it's appropriate. So essentially, we have city, state, federal, and other. The other things I'm going to talk about now are other revenue, and that's how they're reported in our financial statements. We have the investment earnings, and certainly we have the same situation that the City of Baltimore is experiencing. Right now, at the current time, the interest rates are higher on those limited things we're permitted to invest in. The rates do go up and down. There were some years where we only had a couple hundred thousand in investment income, and then, of course, other years where it's far more. So before we report for the second quarter, we will have a conversation with our financial advisor at Wilmington Trust, so we'll have a little better idea on what they think the investment earnings will do for this year. So then we have a line item called other revenue. Other revenue for City Schools includes the revenue that is generated from MSA related to the expenditures, reimbursable expenditures that we incur in the general fund that are permitted to be reimbursed from the MSA Buildings Fund. So for FY2024, that should be about $4 million. We also have another revenue, rent and permits, non-resident tuition, summer school, school police overtime. We get reimbursements in certain cases for school police overtime, so that's another, other revenue. We also get home and hospital reimbursements, OCLAC, and other. If there's not a place where it's somewhere else in city, state, federal, then it goes to another. So you can see here we have GASB requirements, GASB 84, and then GASB 87 for leases. So we generally record, the lease money we get throughout the year, but the School Activity Fund, we report once a year. So the next slide should be the expenditures by category. Is that right? Okay. Expenditures by category, as in LEA in the State of Maryland, City Schools is required to budget and report on the, our expenditures on the 14 MSDE categories. So MSDE has a finance manual, and it tells us exactly where our costs go. I mean, there's a little bit of interpretation sometimes when the main costs are identifiable, such as our IT costs are required to go into administration. You know, special ed, of course, goes in special ed, the student health services, that's the nursing services in the schools, that goes in that particular category. So this, this particular presentation is how we are required to report. But generally, when we, when we speak to others about the year-to-date status or any kind of projection, we generally speak in terms of what we call expenditures by object. That's on the next slide. And then the things that people have a much firmer feel for what it is. You could see salary and wages, fringe benefit, contractual services, material and supplies, and so forth. I do want to point out that the salary and wages and fringe benefits for City Schools is approximately 73% of our total. So we're just like a lot of governmental agencies, and certainly like the other school systems, where that's where the bulk of the money is. So we do have other things, and typically we get questions about indirect cost recovery and transfers. Now, the indirect cost recovery is a credit that is given to the general fund based on a formulaic percentage that is allowed to the general fund for the administrative costs of administering the grants, the financing, the audit, all of that. And transfers are one of the larger numbers other than salary and wages. And that includes things like the seed school tuition, which is about $2.5 million a year for City Schools, the money that we pay to DJS and DHS for reimbursement of educational expenditures for students in state-supervised care, the IKC, the out-of-county living arrangements, informal kenshuk care. That's what we pay to other LEAs who are providing educational services to students whose parents live within the physical confines of Baltimore City. The largest number of transfer expenditures are not The largest number of transfer expenditures are non-public, so that would be the bulk of that $23 million. So, okay, so this is how we, what we use when we are generally given projections. One thing I want to point out is, if you look at the expected percentage, we would have thought, if general, if things just are a smooth pattern, we would have roughly 75% of our expenditures, you know, unencumbered balance. The reason why it's a higher number is because our year-to-date expenditures, with salaries and wages being the bulk of it, we only have one month of school open. So the, the, you know, proportion of expenditures for the next three quarters will have all of the full school costs in them. So that's why it looks like we've got more, you know, a lot of money left over, but that's, that's not so. It's the way our expenditures come in. Just like I talked about how our revenue comes in, our expenditures don't come in in the same pattern, so the percentages are skewed. So in total, the last one, this is just kind of a summary where we say for revenue, our budget is $1.4 billion. We have reached, we have a balance of approximately $1 billion, so that means there's 71.1% that we have not yet received. And for expenditures, the budget, including the encumbers carryover, is $1.5 billion. And we have an unencumbered remaining balance of $1.3 billion, so that's 83.3%. But the reason those percentages are skewed, again, is because of the way we receive our money and the way we expend our money. So that's the information that I have today. Are there any questions? I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Colleagues? Thank you very much, City Schools. We're now in recess.
Thank you.